It'll be nice to have you here. You never hear any.
The meeting might not happen.
Oh, really?
Did you just check with Chad?
Well, we'll see, we'll see. We'll make it happen. Well, I would expect you to show up anyway.
Went coffee.
Oh, I see we have a new recorder here. Oh, rookie. Thank you. Are you ready?
I am.
All right, now, call this meeting ordered. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment's silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So then we have rule call.
I ask commissioners to adjust their microphones. Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Commissioner Bunnock.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sodaslott.
Here.
Commissioner Renton-Bod.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? Please, Mr. Cullen.
Good afternoon. I just got the packet off regarding this meeting, so I'm maybe missing some information. I'm trying to understand the financing required to handle the first item on the agenda. And it's, and the expenditures required. I haven't seen any document that indicates to me what the outstanding surplus funds in every county account exists that could be used to pay for these expenses that are going to be done through a process over the last 15 years where the buildings were overbuilt and a lot of overspending occurred, which some people would call recklessness, but funds that occurred under the control and fiduciary responsibility of earlier county commissioners. To an ordinary person, to see these things happen over the last 30 years where we have overspent and overbuilt, it has a strange ring that seems that maybe some of the commissioners weren't all here, that is, the former commissioners, when they really approved some of these projects, which are now going to cost us dearly, very dearly, because of some, well, I believe, were very poor decisions. In this regards, overspending and overbuilding primarily. So, without, in absence of any document that shows me what kind of surplus funds we have, I would urge the commissioners to consider every surplus fund we have and use any surplus money we have to, and the county coffers, irrespective of what the monies are to be used for. Because counties should not, and neither should townships, be collecting taxes so that we can invest the money to our interest rates. And if the interest rates are higher, we should then go out and borrow more money to spend taxpayers' money on, which doesn't make very much sense. So I urge you commissioners, as you consider this, to not jump to the conclusion to go and borrow money again when you may have surplus funds, even under tight conditions. Those funds may be drawn down to a low level, but I urge you to use prudence and exercise your fiduciary duty and not to tax us some more or not to use tax dollars to, let's say, expend on the, on what now we all know and many of us knew way back 10 years ago, were some very poor decisions and poor constructions that occurred in the work done on the county courthouse and the county jail. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Russ Forst from Hurst Mechanical, Gman 98. We would like to address the board. I have a letter that I wrote that I'd just like to read and go on public record if possible. So again, thank you for the opportunity for allowing Hurst to be represented accurately with regards to the upcoming HVAC bid for the government center here. After watching the special session meeting July 16th of 2019, I'd like to point out the fact that Hurst also uses trained union labor exclusively and are affiliated with the same UA local 84 plumbers and pipe fitters as our competitors, ABI. Secondly, Hurst Mechanical was portrayed as not being a local contractor. Some years ago, Hurst Mechanical was interested in the northern Michigan area. We purchased the former Arms &amp; Coal, Inc., and retained and added many employees in the area. Hurst Mechanical has maintained a branch office in Traverse City for over 10 years. Hurst Mechanical and Arms &amp; Coal have completed projects of this size and larger over the last 100 years. Furthermore, Hurst has chosen to partner with another local sheet metal contractor, Cook, which makes up more than a third of the total project. Cook Sheet Metal also is a local and a union, and is union, and is from the Calcasca area. Hurst Mechanical and Cook Sheet Metal have employees that live right here in Lelandale County. Okay? Hurst Mechanical has spent numerous hours working on this bid and feels very comfortable with the numbers, the schedule, the milestones of this project as laid out in the plans and specs given by Lelandale and E3. Okay? I feel very comfortable with the amount of labor estimated in this project. Our names and our reputation, Hurst Mechanical, is everything to us. So that's why I really wanted to be represented here today. Okay? We do not understand why Lelandale County should spend another $200,000 to get the same results. If you've got any questions, please feel to ask, but that's our public comment.
We have what? Public comment, we do not have question and answer.
Oh, very good, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. So, any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the HVAC finance recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to approve the agenda?
This is special meeting, so the agenda is set. I can't believe. Yes.
We, there seems to be a difference of opinion on what occurred relative to Hurst. I hope that we can hear from the administrator on that. There was some, some issue, some concern that, that, that they, there was some miscommunication maybe from Kirsten. I don't know.
Well, yeah, that's on the agenda. When you go to the HVAC, the first thing is the contract, so that's, thank you for the time. Commissioner Rushton.
John, for the benefit of the public and the commissioners, I would like you to review for us the surplus funds that we have available to us and the options that you presented to us and your recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. As to the financing options we've presented at our last meeting, it was my recommendation that we partially finance this through a third party. In consideration for the county operations and the level of service that it takes to continue that performance during this project's time, we were going to pledge $1.5 million from our surplus, if you will call it that. But we're pulling from fund balance from general fund, $750,000, and additionally, $750,000 from the delinquent tax revolving fund. Those funds are slated based on your guys' approval to get this project started. Furthermore then, I got feedback from you guys as to how you wanted to structure this and reviewing our options. We had a number of options from bonding the entire project at 2.5% to having callables at 2.86. What I present to you today is a private issue bond through Huntington National Bank. These bonds are slated to be $2.1 million. That is the balance between the proposed contractual expenditures that we're going to incur and the 1.5 that we're pledging. Furthermore, using their bond underwriters, Dickinson &amp; Wright, a cost of $15,000, it is cheaper than Miller Canfield by $2,500. So I chose to include Dickinson Wright for our bond counsel. There had been requests for us to close later in fiscal year, and I discussed this with our financial advisors at Huntington. So we have a pending closing date of December 13th. Not only is that advantageous for the county, that we're not going to be sitting on a bond that we're not using, but additionally, it's projected that interest rates are going to be cut by the feds. And quite frankly, banks are more hungry towards the end of the year to have more notes on their books. So we may even get a better rate than what's proposed here today. This will have to go through the same process as I outlined in our last meeting as far as a public notice. The bond counsel advised us that we cannot have them callable prior to the project is finished. As if we were to start repaying the bonds prior to the project being finished, the IRS would question whether or not we even needed to acquire the bonds. And then it would become an issue because this is going to be disclosed and sent to the IRS and part of our closing statements. So we have it scheduled that in 2020 that we can start making payments and prepayments with no penalty. I handed out a revised schedule. On page four of your packet, it still showed 2.2 million. So I had asked them to revise that. On the second to last column, you'll see principal portion on your packet, it says 2.2. The revised is 2.1. During this period of 10 years or, or 10 periods, we'd have an interest expenditures of $176,000. So that would be the outstanding amount that we would incur for this project, notwithstanding the closing fees and the legal fees that we'll, we'll have to deal with if we chose not to make prepayments. Outside of that, this is a, I feel, the best option for the county. It gives us a variable rate, which I think in this climate is going to be to our benefit. We're going to see a reduction in rate. It's a fixed calculation. Basically, it's liver plus, let's say, 20 or 30 basis points from Huntington National Bank. So we know where the interest rates are going to be. Furthermore, as I stated, interest rates will probably be cut by the feds, so that's going to drop it down for the fourth quarter. With the ability to make this closing in December of 2019, we will be able to have those funds available to continue the project. And we will be able to, in 2020, start making our optional payments on December 1st, 2021. And we can just start paying that down. So if you look at your scheduled 2021, we will have incurred by that point under $100,000 in interest. So depending on our cash position at that time, you know, collectively, we can sit down and figure out how much to prepay and prioritize that and pay that down. So I can confidently say that we're probably not going to see the full exposure of the $176,000 in interest. Beyond that, it's up to this board whether or not to proceed with the project. If they want to, if you would have any questions on this proposal or if you want some revision, please let me know. But I think this is my recommendation at this time to get this project moving forward.
Commissioner, your answer.
John, we have this, are you familiar with this? Motion that was prepared for us and the finance and the numbers associated with that?
Don't have it.
Okay, just run right through it here real quick.
Yes, sir.
You know, we're not, exceed not to amount $3,685,000. It says we're going to transfer $750,000 from the delinquent tax revolving fund. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Transfer 1.585 from the general fund.
Correct.
And approve a 2.1 million limited tax general obligation bond.
Correct.
If you add those three together, it's $4,435,000. I'm confused on the numbers.
There may have been a typo on the clerk's behalf with regards to the transfer of the 1.5. It should be...
Isn't that supposed to be 7?
That should be the 785. That's the difference.
I thought 750 and 750.
Initially, it was 750, 750, but it looks to me, without her being here and trying not to speak on her behalf, she made the difference up between what we're going into bond and the transfer amount for the total project of the 3685.
I'm, you know...
Correct. This is suggested...
This is incorrect, is what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
The 1.585 from the general fund really is not that much?
No, it should be the difference between the 2.1 and the 750 and the 3685.
You understand my confusion?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Michelle, send me her notes. Let me check her notes to see what she said. Obviously, she's not here today, but let me double check her notes. It could just be a simple... Yeah, I was just going to follow up on John's comment that John has researched this, has talked to new financial institutions. We have talked to several bond councils. And also, the clerk and I met with John, and we're in agreement that's an option. I also called Steve Peacock, our auditor, to get his perspective because I want to make sure that he, I'll come up with this. And actually, he reminded me that when he came to a meeting in June, this is one of the options he recommended that we look at to finance this project. So he is totally behind this concept also. Not, what I'm saying, but the concept of doing this, taking some part cash reserves from the DTR and some from the bond is something that Steve said he would feel very comfortable with. And actually, he's recommending that. So I just thought you should have that piece of information.
And I too reached out to our auditors as to the next steps, as to how we're going to structure it internally and discuss that with the county. So we had that discussion. The actual over from the general fund should be $835,068.
Okay, that, that makes better sense to me.
Yes.
Her notes did...
Could you repeat that, John? I'm sorry.
835068 and zero cents.
John, when we transfer the 750 from the DTR fund and we transfer the 835,000 from general fund, the balance on those accounts, how much is it? And what is that money set aside for in those funds?
The delinquent tax revolving fund's fund balance will be used to maintain our settlement numbers. We look at a five-year average of the amount that we paid out to the local jurisdictions for delinquent taxes. This would allow us, with some comfort, to continue to do that without the risk of borrowing. With the general fund, depending on the time of year, the fund balance dips down to $5 million, $6 million before we start our collections. And then it, you know, it jumps up and up to October where we get our full collection and we'll have quite a bit of money in there. So it's kind of a subjective question because depending on the timing of the year and the two different funds, they, they act independently. But to generally answer your questions, it will not inhibit our current services and will allow us to maintain those level of services for the future projects.
The reason for my question is due to the fact we're squirreling away these monies for the anticipated settlement that will come over time in an effort not to have to go out and borrow in the event that we have to borrow for settlement. My question is, can more of those dollars be used for this project to offset some of the cost of this project? And take that... Either way, we got to borrow money. If we don't have enough money to pay off at settlement time, right? We either borrow money today or we borrow money tomorrow. That's what you're saying to us. So there may not be a need to borrow money at settlement time as time elapses through this project. So my question is, why are we not looking at taking on that slight risk of utilizing the existing funding that we have in these accounts to offset the cost of this HVAC proposal? And if we foresee the need for borrowing, why could we not go out there and do the exact same thing that we're doing right now to meet those obligations next year?
Those are very good questions. In short, there had been a number of discussions internally as to the number of projects that we have slated for the next two years. Additionally, with the drawdown of funds for the LEC roof, we don't have any capital projects funds left over once that's completed. We do have the opportunity to draw down the delinquent tax revolving fund further. It is a matter of, you know, pay me now or pay me later. With the interest rates the way they are today, I think this is advantageous to pursue this. And if we do have a surplus in the delinquent tax revolving fund in 2021, then we can use that to pay these debts down without having to go out for a bond on the tax settlement.
But would we not be better served by using those dollars upfront? I'm looking also nationally at what's going on. You saw the feds reduced the interest rate by a quarter percent. I think the request was four and a half a percent. And when you look at the landscape out there in the financial world, we're, you know, we've been on this economic trajectory for a long time and they're looking at, you know, this robust economy not proceeding at the same pace, therefore, the quarter percent reduction in interest rates we saw. So my question is, would we not be better served to hold off on implementing this bond proposal and see how things go over the next few months or the next year? I don't think we really talked about this.
Well, and the thing is, is that we haven't had to borrow in 10 years? How long have we been self-funded prior to me being here?
2004 was the bonding for the LEC.
No, as far as the tax revolving fund.
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
The money to build both buildings next door and here was all before, was all delinquent tax money.
And it took about five years to replenish those funds where we drew them down to make those, to do those projects.
It's a timing issue, though. It's a timing issue. And, you know, we're going to work on our budget this year. We haven't even had a chance to look at, you know, where we can look in our budget this next year and begin to make some tweaks. As everybody knows, these departments have had the luxury of inflating their budgets year after year. And I think there's areas that we can reduce these individual budgets and look for some cost savings for our county. Our whole goal here was to try not to impose another millage on our citizens or to go out and borrow money and add to the cost of our citizens. So I'm just wondering if we have really looked at all of the options that we have. We're asking to fund the dollar amount. We, we insisted that our reps reduce that bill that they, or the estimate that they proposed to us. They came to us initially at 3.5 million. And I think we got after them and said, "Look, you can do better." They went back and they did better, and they reduced it by a few hundred thousand. But what are we doing? We're turning around and we're going to borrow over the original amount that they presented us with. My fellow commissioners, I understood, had a concern about having to go out to our taxpayers for the extra millage. We had talked about trying to do that in-house independently. And I'm just wondering if we have really looked at all of the options to save our constituents, those dollars that they're going to need if this economy should roll back a little bit.
Furthermore, if, to speak on that, if the economy were to roll back, that would mean a higher settlement amount. That means more borrowing, it'd be more cost. This is a fixed amount, okay? It is to your budget overview. Jennifer could speak to that. And your, your cost driver for this county is labor and wages.
How would this change if we waited till the end of the year?
This is slated to be closed in, towards the end of the year.
I know, but they're asking us to commit to these parameters right now at this particular interest rate.
No, we don't have to commit to it today. And that's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for direction if you want to pursue this line because, quite frankly, this is, in my opinion, a good option.
Well, let me, let me just throw this out there for my fellow commissioners to ponder. This week, we have been asked to consider a millage that we will be discussing on August 6th for basically the same amount of millage that would be required to pay for this particular project. And if we are going to go out for an extra millage, I think it would be prudent on our part to consider this as the millage as opposed to the proposed millage. part to consider this as the millage as opposed to the proposed millage request that will be coming up. If we're going to tax our people, then let's tax them for those things that we're mandated to fulfill as opposed to going out and incurring more debt and then turning around and asking our citizens for a millage for something that is not mandated.
Yes.
So maybe we should rediscover or re-discuss that option as well.
Commissioner Rittenbach.
Going back to what Commissioner Ansari brought up, the way I read this is that seven hundred and fifty thousand would be transferred from DTR, the five sixteen, to the one oh one. And then the transfer of the greater amount, which I'm not exactly sure what that number is, from the one oh one to the capital building fund project does equal the amount that we're talking about in terms of, it's just a double transfer.
No, I see what you're doing.
So, so that's one thing. The other thing is, is the figures, I'm a little confused because on here it says one million, five eighty-five, and then you quoted eight thirty-five. So there's a fifty thousand dollar difference in those numbers.
Michelle wasn't focused on that. She's not quite sure when the bond and the loan comes, who's actually going to wrap that around. We don't believe that that comes from the four seventy. So either the general fund picks that up or delinquent, someone else pays for your bonding, excuse me, your fifty thousand. So that's why that is not, that number is not in here. The number that she called me about is the number that is proposed to you by your contractor. So that three million, six eighty-five, oh sixty-eight is supposed to be to the dollar of what's represented and was proposed to you. So we came up with the, the figures, the bullet points that follow. And you are correct, Commissioner Rittenbach. Within the general fund and the DTR, the DTR is not in past practice to allocate funds to other funds. The only fund it can transfer to is the general fund. So originally, the motion that was talked about was the DTR to the, the capital improvements, and we do not do that. It's just like when we make MERS prep payments or anything like that, everything flows to the general fund. The general fund is then allocated out and transferred to.
Okay. In regards to the optional payments can be made beginning January of 2021. If you would take into consideration Commissioner Rushton's suggestion of putting off the bonding process, I think we did talk about this in the past, and if we didn't have to ask for as much money for a bond, I mean, if we needed what I would call a float.
Right.
Then, then we would go on a higher interest rate. Am I incorrect? I believe that we've talked about different amounts.
We haven't received a scheduled draws from the contractors, so to understand what the cash flow requirements would be to finance this project are unknown at this point. I was asked that I present an option that we closed later this year specifically by you. And we came to the determination that it's most advantageous for us to borrow at the end of the year because it would be a lower interest rate.
Right.
And the bank themselves would be more willing to negotiate a better rate because the year-end closing. If we were to wait beyond that, there's, yes, many unforeseen.
Okay, so, so the two seven eight or whatever it is that, that the rate is at now?
Yes.
Is it possible that it will go down? I mean, with the lowering yesterday and we expected it to maybe go down again?
Yeah, this was published July twenty-fourth, you know, and so, yes, I would suspect because it is a moving rate, it would be going down.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lo, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was thinking, my thoughts were much, much along the same line as, as what Deborah was saying, as I, because I think she brings up a very valid point that's not to this issue, but it's to the obligations that we're asking of our taxpayers or, or potentially asking of our taxpayers. And we've got, we've got a lot of big-ticket numbers out there. We were asked to approve a special meeting for next week without any mention of a millage. And now there's, we find out, as we much suspected, that the drive is really another millage that's going, we're going to be asked to, to approve. So we've got, on top of our MERS obligation, we have the jail roof, we have this project, we have our radio system yet that we're still obligated to pay for. So, and then now there's going to be another ask of yet another millage. And so these numbers are beginning to really, not that they didn't alarm me before, because they did, but these numbers are, in these projects are really, really beginning to alarm me. And exactly how much are we, do we want to continue to keep obligating our taxpayers for, for things? As you know, like with the radio system, I pushed for the individual departments to actually pay more towards the system than, than what we did. And we ended up paying almost, almost entirely the whole system. So that's my comment. I, I was also thinking along the line of, as, as Commissioner Rushton was saying, that wait perhaps until we're further into the budget process to determine how we're going to pay for this, which option to go with, I should say, so.
Let me suggest an option that may suit everyone's comments here. In terms of getting this project done, we're in a timeline with the order of equipment and the contracts. That is a deadline crunch date. In terms of financing, we're not at deadline now because we have the money to get the project started. John did what he was asked to do. You asked him to come up with financing options. John did a lot of work. Michelle and I talked, we talked, we do counsel. So this is the option John basically came up based on your comments. But as I understand, the critical part is we have to buy the equipment now. So that, we have no cash for.
Mobilization, we're.
We have enough to get this project started. Today is August first. Your budget will be approved the first week of October, which is, I believe, actually the first Tuesday is August, October first or second. So we're two months away. We're just going to start the budget process. Even if you wish to go to financing, I think you still could start in October and still have the money by December.
Yes.
So in that respect, what you're saying, Commissioner Rushton, makes sense. You can approve the contracts, you can start the project. We have enough resources to pay through it. If we get to October first, you'll know exactly what you're talking about for the 2019 budget. At that point, you may want to reduce this from X dollars to a lower amount. Interest rates may be better. The timeline, as I understand, based on discussion, we still couldn't meet that December thirty-first date.
It would be close.
But we could do it if we start in October.
Forty-five day public notice that we have to post, plus, you know, we're just getting legal documents back and forth and getting them signed.
So if it looks like at the middle of, or late September, we need, you still want to discuss it, we could start the process, but we could approve the 2020 budget as well as a potential financing thing, the first meeting in October, which is the first week of October.
Yeah, I would say no way but then October because.
Yeah, so you could in theory do that. But there's no urgency from our perspective right now to get the financing plan finalized right now.
Mr. Rushton.
I think that's a great compromise. We would be able to get that, this project started. We would have an opportunity as a board to review the ongoing capital projects that we're faced with and get our budget in order, look at our extra funding, and make a decisive decision on this issue. You know, if we get done with budget early enough, maybe we may revisit this, you know, at some point before we actually complete the budget because we'll have a strategy and a plan to move forward on this project and others. It sounds like we've got a lot more coming.
So if you look at the motion I gave Mike to Jen, you actually could proceed with the first part of the motion.
You're going to do the first part, you're going to stop where not to exceed more than the number.
And that, we're about to.
The bonding, correct. You leave the funding out.
If you wish to do that.
Well, I mean, I had a question. One is, yesterday at the airport commission, they talked about equipment investment loan. And I don't, they said that way you don't have to pay for bonding.
We don't qualify.
We don't qualify for those?
No.
Okay, so that's, I guess that puts it out because they, they said they could get that, that kind of money.
There's certain authorities and certain, you know.
I think ninety-five, I think.
Okay, so, so that, that answers that. Then, but I was just wondering, how much do we have in our DTR fund at this time? Isn't it around five million? Or is it more than that?
No, I would say five, six million.
And that's, but, and that's the amount that, the most in the last ten years you've paid out, isn't it, is around five million? It's usually less than that, but I think that's the most.
It's less than that, yeah.
And that's why you want to stay at that because at one time at least you hit that.
Well, he has investments too, so cash-wise, he's less than three.
Correct.
So that's what his, his hiccup is, is that it's not, that's not liquid. In your general fund, majority of this is liquid.
Okay, because that was my next question. What do you have besides that's in the DTR fund? But you're counting.
No, that's everything.
That's investments in everything.
Right, right. So if his, if his fund balance is six point one right now, the majority of that is that money is owed to him. It's a receivable on the books. So that's what's showing is going to come in to him.
I see.
If everybody was to pay their taxes by the end of this year, he'd have six point one million dollars in cash and investments. Right.
Cash and investments.
But that doesn't happen.
And then what about how much is in the general fund?
Now, the general fund liquid is about two, two point five right now, and then he has the other invested. So that's why we were comfortable with seven fifty this year, and if need be, seven fifty next year from your general fund. Your general fund will not see a deficit, but you will bring your fund balance down from seven million into the six or high, low fives if you were to take from the general fund. But your cash is there in the general fund.
And that's not taken into consideration.
For the seven hundred and fifty thousand you're talking?
Even one point five.
One point five, okay.
So, and, and then are there any other additional funds available for this kind of a project?
Reserves, what do we have in the reserves?
You have a budget stabilization that you have by a board policy that you're to keep three percent in. Right now, we're about nine hundred thousand short of that. So that's if everybody doesn't pay their taxes and you have to work off what you have. That's, that's separate.
That's really not available for this.
No. The only thing you can do is you could look at your budgets this year, which Michelle and I have talked to you about before, is your transfer-ins to other funds. And then we try and keep those nice and steady. Does that mean that next year you let the child fund go because it's a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar transfer that's budgeted and you let it ride until they need it? That's three hundred and sixty that's left in your general fund. But there's no guarantee. So we try and keep that, I try and keep those as stable as I can when I, when I bring those to you.
Health insurance going up.
Can I get a point of clarification, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Jen, you said that you had in the general fund liquid two point five. What is the total of the fund liquid and investment?
I would say you probably have three five total right now. Right now, you're, he's taking in their money in July. So that's, I'm just working off what I was doing for budget through end of June. So I would say he's, we're now into our collection season. Typically, we all know in our budgets, we budget low on revenue, so our budget number this year will probably come in about three hundred, three fifty higher. So depending on how the collection goes, you would end up, again, with more revenue than expenses. In the scheme of things without the project, your budget is going to look, I would say, I'm not probably a great term, askew because you're going to bring in seven fifty from the DTR and I'm going to push one fifty, one point five out. So it is going to look like you're using your fund balance to supplement this fund, which we are. But in the end, you'll have a, a net loss, meaning you took from your fund balance to fund this.
So, I don't think you gave me a concrete number.
I can't, right now, I couldn't give you that. I mean, I can certainly, at the next budget meeting, give you what will be. I know that when I ran the numbers to prepare your budgets for you, there's about three point three to three point five in your fund balance in the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
You will be getting your budget books here shortly, so you can take that home and look at that.
Yeah. I appreciate all your input.
But it sounds like then there's, there's really not an additional fund that we can get for this kind of project, that we can take the money from.
No, I mean, initially, when we all sat down and we looked at this project and we were thinking it was roughly three million, that is where we came in with, over a two-year period, yes, you could take one point, one point two and one point two or one point three and one point three from each fund over the next two to three years. And you would be in what Michelle would call just the safe zone. You don't have too little, you don't have too much. But when it comes in at three point six, and if you want to drain one point five from the general fund, you need to now supplement the other. So.
And then we still got the three hundred thousand additional for the roof too.
That's correct, correct. And that's going to probably come from general fund this year unless, right now, in the twenty, right now in your 2019 budget, John doesn't have anything from delinquent coming over to us. He actually has a contingency line item in there. So we haven't talked about, okay, is that contingency going to be part of the seven fifty he's sending? Is that contingency going to be the roof this year plus an additional seven fifty? I mean, it's really, you know, you're really talking a shuffling game here to, to cover these expenses, yes, that have gone up and over what we initially sat down and looked at. When we initially sat down and looked at your roof, what was proposed, and this, you were cash, you were cash-heavy, you were fine. But you've come in almost a million dollars extra from what we, so what we looked at. So if you could go to a third year, yeah, we could probably come up with that. But you, we can't guarantee that that third year is going to be that you have that seven hundred and fifty thousand or you have that nine hundred to come into. So that's why when you're looking at these alternate payment systems, you're looking at a bond or you're looking at a loan of some sort to guarantee that your funding and your projects go ahead without a hiccup. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Okay.
Other than I can say it.
Commissioner Lo.
It does. So, so on that point, Jennifer, are we okay waiting till the budget process to, to get something firm and concrete? Or is this the best way to go today with what's recommended?
If you were asking me, on my professional standpoint, I would say that for John to be, to feel safe, that you would go with your commercial lending. And I state that because the unknown is there and your project is far outside your reach of cash. You know, if you had told me that this was going to be a less, he and I would come on the same terms and we'd say, we've got you covered. But we don't have you covered. And so do you really want that unsecure? Can I tell you, are you going to find five hundred thousand in this budget I'm preparing for you? Absolutely not. I can tell you this is the first year in many years that your fund balance is less than a million that you're going to pull to, to balance your budget. But I don't have a guarantee that that's going to stay that rate, that that's going to be that way. There's no wages negotiated, you know, things that we'll talk about with your budget. Right. So this is what I would call a flat budget year. You know, there's, there's hardly any increases in there. It's very, it's a very, just rolled from one budget to the next. So I would call this a flat year.
And we've been warning you about that for some time.
Correct.
That's going to happen.
Correct. So yes, comfort, I would, I mean, I don't carry the cash, he does. But my guess would be is that he's most comfortable if you, if you follow through with your commercial lending versus waiting to see if he's going to have to bond out on his DTR.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rittenbach?
Well, it still seems like we don't have to make a, a decision about the transfer of these funds until October. Am I correct in that understanding?
No, the transfers would still.
Right. I would prepare, I would prepare a budget amendment. I will be doing so if you, if you go ahead and you make this motion that you are going to go ahead with this HVAC project, that you are going to not exceed three point six eight five, the first portion of that will come to you in a budget amendment and a fund transfer to have John's funds come over to the general fund and the general fund to the four seventy to start your purchase project, process.
Now, the signing of the bonds, again, it's going to take sixty days to finalize those, so.
Well, we could even do that to August meeting or December meeting.
Yep, yep.
Correct.
That's the point, right. That's the point I'm trying to make.
No, no. If you give me the, the motion that says you have approved this project, then I give you in August at your regular session, your amendment and your transfers to, to process this so that there's payment there.
Okay.
Commissioner Rushton, do you have a question?
Uh, no. I don't.
Any other questions here?
Just one more, a clerk, for clerkish, and all of you know this, but I'm sure the public understand, we're talking about bonding, we're not talking about the vote of the people for the bonding. A lot of people, when they hear bond, they think of school bonds and so forth, the public vote on it. This is not this type of the bond. This is a decision made by the board. It's not required public vote. If they call it even, as long as I'm sure everyone else is still there.
Additionally, going with the private placement bond, we're saving twenty thousand dollars in, in brokerage fees. So again, it's just a cost-saving measure and the most flexible vehicle that I could find. So again, it's just a cost-saving measure, and the most flexible vehicle that I could find to suit the financing needs. Whatever the dollar amount may end up being, and this type of product, I think, best suits what we're looking for.
So John, in theory, Huntington can come back in a couple weeks with a lower interest rate.
Absolutely.
At that time, we could decide if August, September, or a special meeting, or October meeting.
Looking for a motion?
I'm trying, I was prepared to make one, but I'm, I was just making one on the first two bullets and leaving the third bullet off.
That's correct.
I gave my the chance, I don't want him to cut.
I think the recommendation from the clerk would be that what you want to do is, you want to do your motion to approve the project, and you want it not to exceed 3.6. And you'll state, you'll stop at that point, because then the funding will be basically the amendments and transfers, and then future motions regarding how to supplement the 2.1. Does that make sense?
We don't need to include any of the bullet points.
No, I don't believe so. You are allowing the county to enter into this project for 3.6. We've already stated on the record what the recommendations for the money is, and that will be a 2019 amendment and then transfer. So those amendments and transfers will be made on the record at your regular session in August.
So move.
Look at Laurel.
That's not going to fly.
I move to approve the project for the Leland County Government Center in the amount not to exceed $3,685,068.
Second.
Commissioner Rush.
We're approving the dollar amount, but we have not had the discussion about the contract yet. So we're, you know, is it a not to exceed amount?
It does say that not to exceed.
Okay. So if, for some reason, in our next discussion, the amount is not the full amount, we can adjust that at that point.
The clerk says not to exceed.
Thank you.
And I would like to amend the motion to state with funding, with initial funding, as follows. With the transfer of 750 from the Delinquent Tax Revolving Fund, DTR number 516, to the General Fund 101. Second transfer would be 1.585 and $68, then from the General Fund 101, to the Capital Projects Fund 470. And the remainder of the project to be determined at a future date.
I'm comfortable with that, but I think that's what we don't...
Okay, yeah. All right, now, does anyone want to speak to it? I wanted to wait till we got a second on it before we speak to it. Let's go ahead.
I'm comfortable admitting my motion, too, with that language. I thought that Jen said the clerk and the treasurer would be comfortable not including that in this motion. Does this present a problem to you?
Yeah, it's simply redundant, because we're going to bring before you a budget transfer, so basically going...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It's a redundant statement of request in the motion to have the fund transfers in there, because the budget amendment and transfers will be brought to you at your next meeting.
Okay. So I will restate my amendment, then?
Or you could just remove it.
No, I'm going to restate it. Thank you. With funding as, with funding to be determined at a future date. Does that make sense? So that's the second amendment?
No, it's the first.
You're redoing the first one? It's redoing the first one.
Okay.
May I?
We don't have a second on that, so I guess it fails about a second.
May I speak to the amendment that is on the floor?
Excuse me?
May I speak to the amendment that is on the floor?
Just a clerk, just a point of order, because there was amendment made, it was seconded, she's revising it. The person who's seconded, does she agree with the...
There was no second on the second amendment, so the first amendment stands, and we haven't voted on the first one.
You didn't make the second amendment, you just revised the first one, right?
No second, the second had no second.
So the revision is not passed. So it's back to the original amendment?
Which I would like to speak to.
I thought she was revising her first amendment.
She was trying to, yes. It didn't happen.
She was trying, and if I may, if I may, we've got the amendment on the floor, and I understand what Commissioner Rush is doing. So basically, what we are saying is, we're directing the clerk to do exactly what she's going to do anyway. This is a redundancy. But at the same time, we're adding that portion to our motion, so we are now letting our taxpayers know where some of it is coming from. So that's why I supported the motion. It does spell out, and even to ourselves, the first portion of the funding. And then those amendments and transfers will come to us. So that's why I support it.
Clerk Swanson, I'm fine.
Whatever you wish.
I guess my point is, is we haven't decided how that future funding is going to happen yet. So I wanted that in the motion, so that we all have the same understanding that we are yet to decide how that future funding is going to come about, because we still have all options on the table.
It's kind of like we're dealing with 911.
Sort of, yes, my concern, kind of.
Fancy footwork.
Right.
Yes.
All right, so we do have a motion and amendment, actually amendment, so we'll vote on the amendment?
Could we have it restated, please?
Sure.
Would you like me to restate it?
Well, it's the first, the first three, first motion of the two votes.
I would say the motion is going to be that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the HVAC project for Leland County Government Center in the amount not to exceed $365,000. And then the amendment, and that's the first part, then the amendment to it is the transfer of funds of 750,000 from the Delinquent Tax Revolving Fund, DTR from 516, to the 101. And then the transfer of 1,585,068 from the General Fund 101 to the Capital Project Fund 470.
And then wasn't it, and 2.1 to be yet determined?
No, that's a...
Oh, okay.
No, that, yeah.
So you're going to leave a half out there?
Right.
Yes, that was your question, but you didn't include my amendment, but we didn't get a second, so it's not there.
Right.
Okay.
So anyway, that's what we're voting on, as far as I know. Was there any other questions about it?
We're voting on the amendment.
Yes. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye. Roll call, please.
Yeah, I guess we have to have a roll call. I'm not really sure. I think it failed. I don't know.
Commissioner Rushden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
No.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzorgi?
No.
Commissioner Bunneck?
No.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rentonberg?
No.
Four, three fails.
So that'll bring us back to the original motion.
Three four.
Yeah. So, and that would be from Commissioner Wessel, in which he says that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the HVAC project for Leland County Government Center in an amount not to exceed $3,685,068. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes five to two.
And who are the two no votes?
Rushden and...
Rushden and Bunneck?
Yes.
Any other questions for...
I think that's for now.
All right, sir.
I think there will be later. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your help, guys.
All right, then that brings us, the next thing would be the HVAC recommendations.
What you have is a series of recommendations, three contracts, and then purchase orders. These contracts were drafted by our legal counsel. There's some dialogue with the contractors, but this is our legal counsel, and they agree. There were some minor modifications from the first one. I sent you the second one, the final version. But this is from our legal counsel. The first one is from ABI. And at this point, I probably would want to address Commissioner Wessel's question. So the bids were due Friday, July 12th, at 3:00. ABI bid wasn't on time. The bid from Hearst was a few minutes late, due some allegedly traffic issues, or some miscommunication, or something. But we did not open any of the bids until they came in, so approximately 3:15. So the bids were not open until Hearst submitted their bids, so they all were sealed bids, because that was a question that was brought up. At that point, our consultant, Kirsten, I believe, Mr. Richards, I asked them to review all the contracts and all the bids, because we had several bids for all the projects. And they did that, we had a special meeting. At that point, they made their recommendations on the contracts. And ABI was the one they recommended, it was a special meeting. You heard from Kirsten, her rationale. I believe John was also here with that. After that meeting, I received a call from a representative from Hearst, what concerns, I believe, was it from you?
That was from Tom, don't mind.
Okay, I didn't think it was you, okay. Called me, they watched the video of the meetings, and were concerned about the statements, and claiming that they were not truly vetted out, as Ms. Polly Castro stated. So I've asked the gentleman to put it in writing, and I said I would pass it on to the Board of Commissioners. And if they wished, they could come today for a meeting. I also passed on the exact same information to Kirsten and John and the team for them to respond. Hearst says they were not vetted. Kirsten says they were vetted. So they did that process, we were not involved with that process. There's a difference of opinion. As recently as yesterday, I talked to Kirsten about that. She says there was a full vetting process. A jump from Hearst says that was not the case. They're claiming, as you heard, that they can meet all the criteria, and the standards, and the budget, and the schedules. And they took, they took objections to some of the comments made about the quality of their labor pool and so forth. So in nutshell, that was my involvement between the two individuals. I did ask Mr. Richards to come here, because I thought this might come up. And if you wished, he can address why they went forward to ABI. Or you can ask questions to both gentlemen here, because there's a substantial price difference.
I would like to, because there seems to be some confusion about facts. They either were vetted, or they weren't vetted, and so I'd like Mr. Richards to speak to that.
John Richards, representative of E3. Within this, after this bid process, we contacted both the mechanical bids that we received. And we did talk to them, trying to get a clearer picture of how their bids were built, where they had labor, where they had materials. And so Kirsten was the primary person in doing that work. I was supporting her. But I believe that she looked, you know, tried to put all of the information in her spreadsheet to determine the idea of where the monies were in the processes. We didn't have a formal interview where we sat at a table and talked about the materials that they had in their bids. I think we understood them both to be qualified in putting together bids that had all the material and labor. So we didn't, the materials also, typically in a post-bid interview, you'll talk about what kind of materials do you have for your pumps or such. And I think we were confident that both contractors had equal or as spec'd equipment. So we didn't feel the need to talk to them about that. But, you know, the, both of the bids were really within our, what we had projected as a budget. So I guess I wouldn't, we didn't focus on an additional cost, because it was within our, what we had projected as a budget. So I, we didn't look at that $200,000 as something that would be an additional cost. It was within our kind of projected costs. I don't know if there's anything else.
I'll be sure to answer you.
As I asked in the previous meeting, when Kirsten addressed this, you know, I brought up, you know, this, the Hearst bid's $205,000 cheaper. And I asked the question, is there a problem with the firm? And my understanding is, both firms are reputable firms, that, you know, that there's no question out there as far as ability to perform the work. You know, that's what I got out of it, was that there wasn't any red flags out there. You know, I did a Google search. I didn't see anything with either company that, you know, they have legal problems or constantly in court, or anything like that. I didn't see anything like that. And that's my understanding, is that both firms are reputable firms, doing very large projects. And I asked the question, why would we pay an additional $205,000? And I did not get a good answer. So I'll ask you the question. Why would we pay an additional $205,000 to go with vendor A versus vendor B?
I, you know, I can't give you a smoking gun that will tell you exactly this is the only, or the very specific reason. But I guess we believe that we're within our budgeted, budgeted scope of this project. So we don't look at it as an extra $200,000. It is an additional $200,000 from the low bid to the high bid. But it's, there's really no absolute smoking gun to tell you exactly. But ultimately, you guys will decide which...
Could you address it, because Kirsten aren't here, but she specifically said the quality of the work from the workers. She gives a specific reason, because Commissioner Anzorgi did ask, and I also asked, why would we spend 200, extra $1,000? Just because it's in the budget, it still is extra money that's coming from the taxpayers. So why did she emphatically recommend $200,000, $205,000 extra be spent? I mean, it came from you and her. You were hired to be our consultants, to do the vetting, to go through the process.
And that's what I was looking for, too, and that's what I remember. But it seemed to me that it was confidence to get the work done.
In the quality of time, in the schedule.
So I just took that to be, just coming from professional knowledge of other things, having worked with the companies other times, and that's all, it's all I took from it, but I don't...
I'll be blunt with you. We hired you, we're paying your fee to be our consultants, to do this project for us. Her response in general terms, I want to speak with her, because this is not my field of expertise, is she thought ABI can meet the timelines more accurately with no overruns, and also there was the quality of the work. She concerned there'd be change orders coming from Hearst. Those, as I remember, those were the issue that she brought up.
Commissioner Rush.
We signed a contract with, you know, a vendor to provide this service for X dollar amounts. And they misedimated how much labor it costs to do it. We don't have to pay extra, because they made an error in their estimating. They're obligated to perform the work at the price performed. Isn't that the case? You know, if they made a bad estimate and it costs more, they're on the hook for the overrun? Is that, is it just common sense?
Yes, that is, that is correct. Commissioner Rush, are you?
Thank you.
Commissioner Law.
Could we take a moment and hear from both companies again briefly?
Sure. I mean, we're making a big decision here, so I think anybody we want to hear from, we should.
So I think, well, Mr. Hearst spoke, Hearst's company spoke in public comment. Do they have anything they want to add at this point?
Let's, let's, let me get you out of this witness, if anybody has any questions.
Are you done with this witness?
That's what I'm saying, you know, don't make him bounce up and down.
Poor John.
Commissioner Lotner has the floor. Did you, did you want to ask them a question? Did you want to ask them a question?
No questions specifically, but is there anything more Hearst would like to say at this point before we move on?
If I may.
And then I would like to hear from Mr. ABI, so...
Yeah. I think we can do that when we're done with...
Okay, all right, okay. Because I'm ready to move on.
Historically, have you found that if you hire a company for X amount of dollars and that company comes back with change orders and you tell them, like Commissioner Ansari says, hey, you told us you'd do it for this amount, so it's on you. You need to finish the project in order to get the rest of the pay. The problem with that kind of operation is now you get an employer who has to send employees up to a job and the employer's going to eat that cost. So the performance, and I'm not pointing out any one of these, it's just a hypothetical. The performance usually that is received by the customer is not the highest standard. So that raises a concern for me. If the project... If the company can't meet the project requirements for the bid that they presented and they've been told they're not getting the extra, there's no overruns, and they find that they made a mistake, sure, they're going to have to eat it, but then what's the quality that we're going to get as a client? And that's the only thing I wanted to bring to the table.
Commissioner Whistler. I'd like an answer to my question about the July 23 communication from Mr. Janik, where he said that he received word from Hearst that the company was not provided the opportunity to be interviewed by the consultant or the engineering team. And then the response from Kirsten said they did interview and did review. So two different statements of fact, only one of those can be true.
I believe it was a telephone interview.
Yes, yes. It was not an interview in person talking about the specifics of the project. We understood that they had met our requirements of what was drawn, that we didn't have any concerns with either company providing equipment or traditional questions.
Then I don't know why we would, if you had no concern, there were no issue with either company, why we would sit here and say we're going to pay $200,000 extra. Because that's a significant interest payment on that loan we were talking about doing. So I am troubled by this and I believe that we should reconsider who does our project.
I just, you know, I mean, maybe I read into this or not, but my understanding of it is that if someone has underbidded, that it ends up creating problems and the job gets held up. They, they'll, you know, and this wasn't stated, but yeah, that I can see, I can understand and see how that happens. Because if they're at a job where they're not making any money, they'll send someone to a job where they're making money. And then we'll fill in with the job where they're not making any money. And I, and maybe I'm reading too much into it, but if that, if that, there wasn't enough labor provided in the project, you know, they would, our advisor would fear that the job could get held up by the fact that there isn't enough labor in it. And that doesn't mean they wouldn't do it for the amount that they said, because they would. But the whole project could be held up and she felt this was under a time contract.
I would add to that, because that's my, not to put words in Kirsten's mouth, but that's how I remembered it. Basically, she was saying you have hired us to give you our professional advice and counsel on how to move this project forward in a timely manner. And that based on their experience and knowledge of the companies, they were sure they could meet the time constraints with the recommendations they were making. That's what I took from it.
Commissioner Ansari.
I understand the logic. That could apply to any bid, including the higher bid. They could come back and say, oh, God, we made a mistake on this. That same logic could apply for the higher price bid as well. That they could say, oh, God, we made a mistake, we're going to send people, you know, to the jobs we make money on and not this job. Doesn't matter, in my opinion. It doesn't matter, because that could happen in either case, in this case. So I still don't have a good answer on why we would spend $205,000 more than we need to.
I mean, I think the same thing could be applied, then you say, to the electrical one.
Exactly. Any one of them could say, you could add that logic.
Because that was $70,000, the other one was $23,700. You know, you're talking another forty-some thousand dollars. But that's why we hired them, to give us advice, because we can make these decisions based on money alone, and that's not always the wisest thing to do. Any other statements? Yes.
But I'm hearing that even though there was concern about the labor, there wasn't an opportunity for the bidder to defend their price. And as Kirsten believed that maybe they had underbudgeted, there should have been an interview where that was discussed. Because we lost an opportunity, maybe, to spend $200,000 less.
Didn't you say it was discussed by phone?
Yes, Kirsten did discuss with both companies to get a clearer picture of how their bid was made up. And I think she, as I understand, she went with what information she was provided. And she made her, you know, we talked and we made a recommendation based on what was given to us. And that was the ABI people. But, I mean, ultimately, it is you guys that will make that decision. We were just giving you a recommendation.
Commissioner Lotner.
I would like to move that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve an agreement between the County of Leland and ABI Mechanical in an amount not to exceed $2,374,000 as presented, subject to corporate council review and approval. Funds to come from Capital Projects Fund 470.
Second.
Okay, I'm just trying to get the ball rolling here and move on. We can go back and forth here all day, but when I look at this whole project, and we have hired a company to help advise us, after listening to Kirsten the other day, I have to believe that her confidence in this company means something. We have an amount not to exceed, so that also leads me to believe that this company probably has built, probably, has built a contingency in there of some kind. Therefore, it's going to be my hope that it comes in something less than this amount as they get in and get the project going. That's my reason for the motion, on the floor.
Commissioner Whitaker.
I was just going to question if the board would like to hear from both companies at this time before we make a vote.
Well, I was hoping that by putting motion on the floor now, we can ask them to speak to it if they choose to.
Yeah, I mean, I guess then we're through with you, and then if they wanted to come forward.
Yes, I'll be available here, if you need me.
Thank you.
Did either one want to come forward to speak?
I'll go first, just a second. Go ahead. All right, thank you for allowing us to speak, definitely. ABI and Hearst Mechanical are both very good contractors. We don't get here by not being good contractors. And our reputation, their reputation is, you know, very good, both of us. So you're not going to go around with either contractor. In speaking to some of the comments that were made, and I'd like Jamin to speak on it, because he was the one that actually went through the interview, correct? So Jamin can talk to a couple of things that happened there. From what I understood, because I wasn't in the interview, is that it was one that is not a normal post-bid interview. Number one, it was over the phone. Typically, it's in a meeting state. Also, the questions that were asked were not a normal review of a project. So from that, that was from my understanding of talking to Jamin on that.
The phone interview lasted less than five minutes. And then I was asked to give a breakdown of materials, which I was given more or less than two hours to do. And I did it to the best of my ability. But at the end of the day, I mean, to your point, we agreed to do the job for X amount.
And as far as labor goes, sending labor, no. We send labor out to the job. They don't know who was low, who was high, who was in the middle. They're professionals.
And they wouldn't know in the midst of the job, had the job not been making money or we were out of hours or something like that. The guys in the field wouldn't know that. They would just do the job, you know, as they see fit.
And the other comment on a contingency, it's a bid spec type job. We don't throw in a, we do a ton of design build all across the state. And with that, yeah, there's a set dollar amount for contingency amount. But when you have a bid spec, you are bidding, you're going to put this piece of pipe in from this spot to that spot. So you don't put in an extra $50 to, because it might not be that way.
Okay. I was just wondering if your labor is union or non-union labor?
We... Go ahead.
We are a union company.
Okay.
And we pull, ABI and us, we pull from the same gene pool, from the same...
Same union, same labor pool.
That's why I asked the question.
We have employees that work for us that have worked there before and vice versa.
Again, both great contractors. You know, I wouldn't say anything bad about ABI or...
Not at all.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I wasn't prepared to speak. Ken Goodhue with ABI Mechanical. I put the bid together. I'm the project manager for the bid. Our foreman is Chris Colder, that lives up in Leland County. Bob Schaub lives in Leland County, he's going to be working on the project. I lived and breathed this job for two weeks. I came up here at the walkthrough and it was, you know, fantastic job. There's some things that are on the plan that don't show water lines, other, you know, areas. I have those covered. You know, I came up here and looked at it. Hanging the chilled beams, there's no detail to hang them, but they got to be hung, we have all that in there. I'm working with, you're buying the air handler, pre-purchased. I'm already working with the supplier to get it shipped differently in the splits so it'll go through the doors. It would have arrived bigger than the door openings. I'm working with them right now on that. I've done a lot of work on the job. I'm just, I'm very confident. I don't know about Hearst's bid, you know, who put it together. There is a contingency in there for the fire suppression, because he's got 47 heat pumps that the fire suppression lines may have to be moved. If they don't have to be moved, there will be money given back. There's a $50,000 ceiling allowance in our bid, so if we don't use all that, that money comes back. So there is some money's built in there. And I've worked with, you know, our subs hard on this job. Every one of our subs has come through, up here and walked through this building and they understand the job pretty good.
Just for clarification, are your employees union or non-union?
Union.
Oh, are union.
Yeah, we're a member of local 85.
Any other questions? Commissioner Whitaker.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah.
In your bid, is there anything that you're providing in terms of materials or detail that wasn't covered in the bid from the other bid?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know who put their bid together, and I don't know what they have in there.
I'm assuming the specs were there, so...
Well, the specs are there, but there's, you know, there's some things like the water to the humidifiers, that's not detailed out or anything like that. And that's, you know, we need to get water there. I got to have something in there for our bid.
My point is, I would assume that both firms knew that they had to get water to the system and built that into their plans.
Yeah, I don't, I can't speak for Hearst, but, you know, I mean...
I'm assuming you came up and took a look in person, so that you were familiar with any unusual...
Yes, certainly, yeah. Yep, that's why I knew the door openings weren't, you know, I mean, we got the submittals from the, for the air handlers, and the air handlers were going to come with different shipping splits and they wouldn't fit through the doors. So if they would have arrived here... If they would have arrived here, they would have been too big to fit through the doors, would have caused extra work and everything. And we're working with the pre-purchased equipment suppliers right now to alleviate any problems like that, so...
And I understand you to say that your subcontractors that are going to work on this all came through as well.
All what?
That your subcontractors came through and took a look in person as well.
Yes, yep, yep. machine metal contractor, insulator, yep. Yeah. That's it?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I have, if I may, a question for Hearst.
Oh, for Hearst, yes. Go ahead.
My question is, did you come up and personally look at it? And did you have your contractors look at it as well?
I submitted together and I did. I gave them a look at it as well.
I was just wondering, because I know you said you had to put your bid in in two hours, so I wondered if you...
So to clarify that, I had to give the labor and material breakdown, and I had two hours to do that. Which I did give a schedule of values that laid out. If you're not familiar with the schedule of values, it says boiler material price, boiler labor price, chiller labor price, chiller material price. It lays out everything that, you know, subcontractors, I mean, I have that same allowance in there for ceilings, I have an allowance in there for the fire protection, you know, and I laid all that out.
And your contractors came up, your subcontractors, and took a look?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We had, I think, Jerry, was it two pre-bid walk-throughs? So we had two. And we had a large group of subcontractors here, so I think both companies saw that.
Well, I just had one question then for John. You said it was within the parameters of your bids, but what you said, I mean, the parameter was $1,919,000. So ABI's is actually $400,000 above that. And Hearst is $200,000 above it. So, but you're saying a considerable, that's a considerable difference to me, it's not really within that, those parameters.
Sorry.
Yeah, maybe I heard you wrong, but that's what I remember.
No, I don't know the specifics of the bid. I think that Kirsten had gone through and said that she was over in some areas but under in others, and I think the overall... My statement is more into the overall scope cost of the entire project, not specific areas.
Because I thought the overall we talked about was 3.3, and then we're at 3.6.
Right, we've got built in a contingency that is...
But, well, I mean, just having you here, that's with the contingency, it was 3.4, I guess.
Right, right. No, my statement is, I think we're not contractors, so we don't know the exact number. But you can expect us, I would say we were really close to the ballpark of what it was going to be, maybe it's plus or minus a percent of sort.
But I always seem to be over, that's... That's the problem. So, I don't know, were there any other questions for John? Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor for ABI. And no one has any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but we still in discussion?
Yes. Go ahead.
I've heard nothing from either of the contractors.
I've heard nothing from either of the contractors to justify paying an additional $205,000. So I will not be supporting the motion, because it's $205,000.
Commissioner West. I feel the same way, and I also would like the message to Kirsten that at least one commissioner is unhappy with the whole process and the services. And knowing that, knowing that there was an issue today, should have been addressed more forcefully, and Kirsten should have been here. I will not support this motion.
I'm not going to support it, but I don't support the whole project, so. So it's not about either contractor, so.
If there's one question that, you know, maybe we understand that Hearst is not happy with how the post-bid, but I don't, maybe Ken Goodhue could at least say his opinion, being the other contractor, if he felt it was a reasonable post-bid.
Yeah, we have phone interviews all the time on jobs. Kirsten asked for information on labor.
Could you step to the table, so I can hear?
I'm sorry. I'm on the spot. I think the part of this.
Yeah, we have phone interviews all the time. And then she asked for information, and I provided the information that she asked for. Within an hour, I got her all the breakdowns of our labor and materials, and what we had in our cost-wise. And, yeah, and that wasn't the only phone call. I had, you know, there was more than one phone call with Kirsten. I mean, if she had, the initial phone call probably lasted, you know, five or 10 minutes, and then there was other phone calls that she wanted, that she needed more information. So, you know, it's a process. So I can see why she didn't have a meeting with, you know, in person, by phone, email, and, you know, even text messages, so. I thought it went well. I did.
That was just one point. I felt like we didn't hear the other side.
Well, that's good. No, I appreciate that.
To at least back up Kirsten's post-bid interviews, I figured that was something you should hear.
Does our administrator have anything to add to this process as he was involved with, I think, resolving the initial?
Just what I stated, I talked to both Kirsten, John, the reps from Hearst. Got different versions of what happened. It is basically the perspective of how the vetting went. Hearst was concerned that they were given, as you stated, less than half hour. It was a phone call. It was not in person. They were concerned that that not give them opportunity to fully express their views. Kirsten said she did call them, and she vetted them through the phone. She agreed it was a fairly short process, so she did state that. Because I asked her that, how long was it? There may be some slight difference of opinions on how long it lasted. But I think both parties agreed it was less than half hour. Total dialogue on the project.
It is a 2.2, and it's a multi-million dollar project.
Any other questions or statements or anything? I would ask for a roll call on this, please.
Commissioner Lautner, you have a motion. Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rentonback?
No.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sodis Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
No.
Commissioner Bonak?
No.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
No.
Motion fails three, four.
Okay, so that would be, you know, then do we want to have another motion or anything? Because this is to try to decide if we're going to do this project or not? Commissioner West.
I don't think we're ready for another motion at this time. I think we need Kirsten here, and I think we need to reconsider the contracts.
But we have the bids. I mean, we have the bids, and we know what they are, so.
But I think we need our expert, I think we need our expert here to answer, to relook at those bids and address questions about those bids.
Well, you could stop the entire project, or if you wish to go forward, you can approve the other parts, and then have a meeting to talk about the mechanical. But mechanical is the major part of the project.
It's the major part?
Yeah.
I think.
And so then, I mean, that is a critical part of the, if you don't have agreement on a majority on the mechanical, it's difficult to go forward with everything else.
Then we want to go on then to the budget? What do you want to do?
You could, if you want to get us up on another meeting, you have one scheduled for next?
Six.
The sixth and the eighth, I believe, right? So the budget meeting on the eighth also, a workshop.
The eighth might be better. Mine?
I would like to move to recess for 10 minutes.
Okay, yeah, that's a good idea. Take a 10-minute recess. Can you call us, feeding back the order, please? We will have.
All right.
So do we have any other recommendations about the HVAC?
I have another question for John. And I just know you can answer this right off the top of your head. What we would like to know is what is the impact of the tariffs on this particular bid?
I don't believe that there, I don't think there is substantial, I don't think that it changes this, the tariffs. The majority of the materials are American-made. I don't believe that we're looking at something that tariffs have an issue.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I got. I know you could answer us right off the top.
Jerry, did you want to talk? Yeah. Jerry wanted to address this here, too. Sorry, I didn't get you here before the vote.
Good afternoon. My name's Jerry Coleman. I'm the maintenance director, Bill Oak County, 39 years. The reason I've been watching, talking for some time, and no one ever asked me my opinion. They all assumed. And I've been in a lot of discussion with Gary O'Connor, who's done our work for us, and I have never found a better person that cares more about the county than myself and some others, but that knows what to do and how to take care of us, and he has. And I talked to him, and I said, I just feel that, looking at what's going on, the kind of money we're talking, more importantly, we all know that everything goes bad after a while. We don't know when. I can attest to that personally. And one day, if things aren't running great, everything's smooth, and the next day, it goes down. Do we replace the whole system for a better system, maybe? Yes, we could. But for average, I figure $14,000 high-end to pull the units. We have six right now. You're looking at about $80,000. To pull the four units, or five units, five or six, let's see. Six units right now. And you figure $80,000, six units, $80,000, or $100,000 for 10. You know, and we just, I just feel that at this point in time, no money has, not a lot of money has been let right now, let. My personal opinion is that we, on the maintenance side, continue taking care of what we have. It does work. I am not saying, you wonder why, I'm not saying that it's the perfect system we have, but it does work. Okay, we have a few cold, we've got cold spots and whatnot, that is true. They pulled the baseboard heating when they built the building. Okay, that's a given. But maybe we've got to replace boilers or whatever down the line. But like I said, things, everything's going to fail. Even the new equipment's going to fail one day. And they'll be readdressing the situation possibly. We all don't know. All these companies that are here, the two companies, are power engineering. They're great people. They've done a wonderful job. Why didn't I come forward sooner? Did it matter? Maybe it did, maybe it didn't. But I feel that how things are going right now, and there's a lot of different things in play here. Will it hurt for us to wait? No. Will it hurt for us to fix what we have? No. I've got $30,000 I'm looking at next year just for the asphalt work out here, which is every three years. But to do it better, it's going to cost more money than the 13 we paid three, four years ago. So we've got bigger cracks, et cetera. There's other things going on, too, and I understand that. It's just part of maintenance. But the bottom line here is, we have to pay people who we pay and say thank you and move on. That's your call. I understand that. Why didn't I come forward? I apologize for not, because I wasn't ready. And I don't think anything, just major decisions have been made up to this point. So, you know, I just wanted you to know that I feel that we could spend $15,000, eight, or $15,000 per se, per unit that we have. We have six down right now. Other things are coming up. There's a lot of what-ifs, like Commissioner Rushton said, and some of the others, and we don't know. But I just feel we might, we can get by for a while. I really do. At this point in time, and study things more, maybe another year, two years. We can go after it again, but we have everything in play right now, or we have a foundation to work off of. You know, that's just my opinion, okay? But when it comes to fixing these units, then we need to go after it and get it taken care of. That's kind of the way I like to work, as you know, cutting holes in the lawn, et cetera. We won't go there, right, Melinda?
Yeah.
But it worked, anyway. So, but that's all I had to say. And I do apologize in a way, but then again, I just didn't want to come forward and start shooting my mouth off about something until I finally could see everything and how things are working. So your call, but that's my opinion, personal opinion.
Any questions for Jerry?
No.
Oh, Commissioner West, go ahead.
This is going back to our original discussion. We can afford to spend $200,000 a year fixing this current system, adding to it or whatever, and not spend any more money than we would spending 3.6 today, don't have to borrow any money. I don't think we should do a damn thing, other than fix what we got and look at fixing the things that should have been installed originally. And I think it's a, you know, it's not an emergency. We don't have anybody dying of mold or anything like that. Again, we could spend $200,000 a year for a long, long time and still be ahead of the game in borrowing money today for 3.6 million. Thank you.
My question is for Commissioner Ansorgi. When you say fix the things that aren't there, do you mean put in baseboards? Baseboarding heat, or what? What were you meaning?
We have six heat pumps down today.
Right.
Replace those six heat pumps, look at a project to put in the baseboard that should have been installed originally. You know, you can phase all this stuff in over a long period of time and still have a good system. And you're going to get brand-new heat pumps that are more efficient than the old ones that are dying now.
Thank you. It was, I thought you were implying put in the baseboard heating, and that is what you were.
And, you know, that doesn't have to be done today. We can look at that as a project and schedule it as an incremental project, rather than one huge giant $3.6 million fiasco.
Any other comments? Seeing none, then we'll move. Yes, Commissioner Lautner?
Were you just going to say we're moving on to budget?
Yes.
Then I have a clarification question, I guess, or maybe a, I have a question on process. We've got a motion on the floor to approve the project. I mean, we got the motion that we had passed at this meeting to move this project forward. And I'm not hearing a lot of confidence in that at this time. As much as we have studied this, we still seem to have a lot of questions on the project. So what is in order then, at this time, if that's the case? Leave that motion standing and move forward? Or do we want to put a hold on this project today?
Well, that's one of the reasons I suggested we add this to a special meeting agenda to talk about, whether you want to go forward with ABI, whether you want with Hearst, or whether you want to continue with the project.
So what you're saying is if we have not approved the contractors, it's not moving forward anyway?
Well, there's no legal no, because you haven't allocated any money. You authorized the project and the partial funding of it, but you have not signed any contract. You have not ordered any equipment. You have not signed a contract with 3E to be the project manager. So at that point, you have not done that.
So the idea is we're going to talk about this at another meeting?
Really, the critical part, I think we all agree, is we have to decide on the mechanical contract. If you approve a contract with the mechanical contractor, I assume you're going to approve the other contracts and the purchase orders. Would not make any sense to approve a contract with a mechanical contractor and not do the rest. But if you don't approve the mechanical contractor, certainly does not make sense to go forward with the purchase orders and start ordering equipment.
Point exactly. I just know that there's a certain amount of time that if we are not going to move forward with this project, we need to rescind, and it has to be done in a certain process for rescinding. We're okay with that?
Because really, you have not, you have not spent any money. It could be, I mean, I'm just throwing this out. If you go that money not to exceed, it could be the renovations. It doesn't have to be the specific design. It could be something with Commissioner Ansorgi stated. You know, so you do have lots of options.
That's a very good point. Okay.
But you do need to make some decisions, because these bids are not going to be altered forever. And in turn, to meet our guideline, too, we really should have a meeting. Either, well, you have one scheduled on the sixth, you have one scheduled on the eighth already.
Right, eighth would be more sense.
Commissioner West.
So is this the time that we should set that meeting?
I think it'd be helpful.
So the meeting on?
Meeting on the sixth, I believe, is at what time, Laurel?
Three.
Three o'clock.
And then the one on the eighth is?
At nine, at nine?
Yeah, I don't.
I think it's nine.
I think so.
Makes sense to follow that one.
I don't think you want another special meeting to have a, so like one of those two dates.
We could do that one at nine and then do budget following. That'd be the most logical.
On the eighth?
Yeah. Well, or on the sixth, we could just move it up earlier.
Well, we're not the sixth, because some people couldn't do it before three.
Well, let's, does, okay, your choices are nine o'clock on the eighth, knowing it's going to be longer, because it's going to be this plus the budget, or do it on the sixth and start the meeting before three. But I think some people had maybe conflicts.
That's why we set it at three.
And we're all going to need to be here for this. So I'm good with nine o'clock on the eighth.
I mean, all of you agree, but it's going to be longer than you probably virtually anticipated.
It is what it is.
I'm just thinking, though, that if we do it on the sixth, if there's still questions and still things, then we can also have the eighth again to address it again.
We could do it following our special meeting.
Well, you could start the meeting at three o'clock, just.
Right.
No, you're not going to be done.
Commissioner West.
I think it's important that Kirsten be here, so if, I think.
Either one that she could make.
Either one that she could make, but we need her here.
I have no idea where she's at now. Could you call her?
Yeah, well, I don't think she's available. She's out in Seattle.
Her phone probably works in Seattle, although.
Well, she's fishing.
Can you at least call her by now?
I can find out.
If we do it on the sixth, I would say we do it after.
Yes. Second thing.
After's fine with me.
Well, maybe we proceed and see what John finds out.
Right, see if she can be there. That would be the thing.
Kirsten, I'm in the meeting, and they want to know if you would be available on the sixth of August.
Or the eighth.
Is that, is that something, you will be available?
How about the eighth?
And then also the eighth, if not the sixth. You'll be available both days, right? Okay, yeah, good. I'll let you know. All right. Thanks, Kirsten.
So, I, did someone wanna make a motion to move it to the sixth and after the early childhood development discussion?
That's kind of me.
So...
I would make the motion to add the discussion of the HVAC system here at the governmental center to the August sixth meeting after the early childhood development discussion.
Second?
I don't know, it's a special meeting and...
Can we do that?
Can't really change it.
You can, but you have to sign, you have to redo the posting we do. Can you do it? Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, just tell us when you wanna meet, we'll take care of the legal.
Yeah, just as we did for the HVAC onto this one, because this was really just the budget meeting.
So, we can take care of that.
The budget is a work meeting. The other, the budget is a work meeting.
No, this, we will schedule it.
Not to set out a new agenda.
We will, we'll take care of the details. Tell us when you wanna meet. Laura and I will take care of the details.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Everybody understands what it is. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, we'll just pass it seven to all. Thank you.
So, meeting will be on, just so I make sure I understand?
Yes. Meeting on the sixth? After. So, we'll... After, early childhood development.
Okay, so Laura and I will take care of the details.
All right, then that would bring us to budget. So, we'll prove, we'll see.
Can I hear?
All right.
Let me get Jen.
Okay.
She was waiting for me to talk. All of you are close.
Looks like them.
We do, we do.
Is that your furniture?
Yeah, I think it's from the union.
Yeah, you're probably right. It looks pretty nice. Don't get me started.
A little bigger than some of mine, maybe.
It's kinda hot.
Nice pictures on the back. You can get mine.
Perfect, huh?
Mm-hmm.
That's very sweet.
Chad, do you want some? Did you get your book? Yes, sir. Is there a couple of them? Well, that's for you. It's for Jen and I. Just curious what you have.
I told him to check it real close, because there's probably extra hundred-dollar bills stuffed in it.
Jen's on her way.
You showed me one here the other night. You remember that now, right?
Yeah. Go for it.
Chad's gonna do all the talking anyway.
Oh, you.
Whoa!
Get over here, sit down.
Let me see what's on his cover.
Yeah. Everybody has a road. John has the beach in the back. I got apple blossoms.
And I have good harbor, thank you.
On the front.
All right. I got the highway. The highway, yes. Let me start by, first of all, thanking Jen and Michelle. They've spent many weekends, and John will agree, I think, on this.
Yeah.
That they, with anything else going on, and they were short-staffed by two people for most of the last two months. And I know personally, they have been here on weekends and many other weekends. Because I can tell, because Michelle sends out emails on Saturday and Sunday, texts that she's in the office doing this and this. So, thank you, Jen, for all of that.
You're welcome.
Even last Sunday, I know you were in here. So, this was a lot of work to put this book together. Thank you very much. I think the staff has been very diligent in trying to keep the budget in line. Virtually all departments are just submitting what they have proposed in the past, overall. And we'll go with the details, but in terms of the new takes in the budget, and you'll get a memo, so you have taken notes on this, I'm in the process of writing a memo. But Jen and I, John and Michelle, and I came up with some notes on some unique requests for 2020. That seems like such a long ways off, 2020. It just doesn't come out naturally.
Is there a song about that?
In the year 2525.
Oh, 2525. We gotta find more, five, six years.
No, but they don't...
Five hundred and five.
To the year 2525.
Can't they not put indicators in line?
We're dating ourselves by remembering that song. But, so we have the whole budget process, and today, we're not expecting to go through this and so forth. But Jen promised us that we'd be done by eight o'clock.
Absolutely right.
At least we know what time to get around.
That's right.
We'll take a break on six.
What's your first page look like?
But just a general overview, in terms of what's in the book and what's not in the book, in terms of requests, I will put this all in a memo to you, but what is in the book, new, is four vehicles from the Sheriff's Department. We did have MERS, additional MERS payment of $250,000 that's built into. So, Jen started talking about revenues, expenses. We did build in four vehicles for motor pool and the MERS extra payment of $250,000 that is included. What is not in the budget, this contract negotiation, is salary increases. So, steps are built in, but any type of salary increases are not. But I just talked to Peter Cole this morning about the process of starting negotiations. Past history is, the units will probably wait till October, November, maybe December to start the process. But there are no pay increases built in. So, at some point, assuming we'll contract, we will have to amend this right from the beginning. Another thing that's come up is, last year, the prosecutor submitted a stop grant partnership with the Women's Resource Center. That position was never filled, he actually never posted it. So, that is not in the budget, because we're not sure what his plans are. He did not submit it. It's on budget. He chose for whatever, not to even post a job last year. So, I'm not actually sure how they're covering those services, and I don't think they have received the grant, have they?
No.
No, so that's not in the budget.
And what services were that for?
That was, Jen?
It was a, it's like a women's resource grant to help with PPOs and domestic violence and those kind of situations for both male and females.
As you probably remember, Stacy Lamb did that on a contract basis for...
None of her years.
As long as I've been here. She chose not to do that anymore. Joe came to the board asking for increases for his staff. Response was no, and he had chosen not to pursue any other option, to the best of my knowledge. So, that's not in the grant. One thing that's not in there, that you'll get my update this evening, is some potential major costs with dam authority. The dam authority has a special meeting this yesterday. With the high water levels, there's actually water coming into the control room, it's about two inches. I have a link that you can click on to see some photos. But also, there was some inspection done by OSHA. He did not cite us, but he gave up with recommendations of safety issues with the dam. And the dam authority asked Patrick Machid to put together a proposal just to do a feasibility study, or a engineering study, what needs to be done to address the water issue, as well as the safety recommendations from OSHA. The study alone is $20,000, almost $12,000 some dollars. So, one of the things, and John and I were at the dam meeting yesterday, and we told them, well, we know how commissioners think. We need to gather about how much you're talking about giving it the work done. And two, if we're gonna do this, it should be an assessment to the lake, it's a lake assessment. So, today, John and I and Steve Richardson had a conference call with our legal counsel to make sure we know exact process if you choose to do that. The process has not changed. Because there is a court-mandated lake assessment district already set up, it's actually much easier to get this process done. So, we're working on that. Just want you to be prepared, even though it's bound to budget, there could be some significant dollars for the dam.
If we have to go back for an assessment for that assessment district, the lake assessment district, we should look at everything that needs to be done, not just...
Yes, we, thank you. Didn't we just have the same discussion?
Okay.
And I told Steve, and he agreed that if we're gonna do it, come up with a long-term plan, so they're not coming back to you every single year. Come up a long-term plan. The example I use, I live on a private road. I get assessed every year. It's the same amount every year. We just had our entire road blacktop again. We're not paying any difference, because that was built into the budget. And so, John and I both urging them, the dam authority, come up with a long-term plan, let's say ten years. So, the homeowners, there are no exact what's gonna be. You don't wanna just come back every other year with some different amounts, for them coming to the board every year saying, well, we need this project, or halfway through the year coming and say, oh, by the way, this just came up. Come up with a long-term plan, so everyone knows in advance, secure funding source. And I think the Lake Association, people would appreciate knowing that also.
Yes.
So, that's gonna be a major, I don't have any numbers yet. We hope to have some numbers to you by the August thirteenth executive, at least a ballpark number of what they're talking about. Because if it's $20,000 just to do the study, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And it's very technical, precise work, that very few companies can perform.
Is that in process right now?
The recognition will be coming to you in August to approve the engineering.
Okay.
We did check. We can, we cover those costs through a special assessment. We can't do the work and then do a special assessment.
Oh, okay.
Just like with this project, like John said, you can't do it and then also get bounced paid back.
Got it.
But those type of fees can be covered.
The work, it sounds like it's all infrastructure.
Yes.
So, it'll be on the actual building, where the...
Yes, and the actual dam, which is part of the court order, so there's no question.
I was wondering, is it on the dam, or is it still...
It's some both.
Oh.
Some both. But I just want you to know, that's coming. I don't have any numbers for you. We'll have more information by the August thirteenth executive committee meeting.
Will you back up? When you talked about salary increases, you talked about the union negotiations not until this fall. So, those salaries are not in the budget. Are there other...
No increase.
No increase for anybody.
Okay, for anybody, that was my question.
The board has not approved any increase for non-salary.
Correct.
You did for two years, but that expired. So, there has to be a motion. As you remember in the past, the contracts have to be approved, both sides have agreed upon them. But also, for the non-union, the board has to pass a resolution to increase the...
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on that. I didn't know if there was...
Step increases are in there?
Step increases are built in.
Okay.
But in on the dam assessment, the previous time, it was the entire county. Fifty percent of the cost went to the lake, front properties. Fifty percent of the cost went to the entire county.
Yeah, you're gonna have to talk about how you wanna do that.
Right, and that really did create, you know, especially like Land Lake was paying for Lake Leona, they didn't really appreciate that.
Yeah, we're not gonna go, we're not to that point. We're saying, we do have the legal ability, the Lake Association District is set up by court order. So, it's, it would be much, much longer and tedious of drawn-out process to set up a special assessment district. We don't have to do that. Our attorneys confirmed that. The boundaries are in place. We'll have to redo those, because there've probably been property splits from the last time assessment. But the actual boundary of the assessment district is in place by court order.
Commissioner Anzari?
I know that there's requirements with the state for every dam, you know, X number of years and all this kind of stuff. So, hopefully, they will look at that to say, you know, maybe we do a special assessment for a five-year period to cover, or twenty, ten years, or whatever the period, to cover all those expected costs that we're gonna have associated with that.
This is exactly what John and I were insisting that they do. Don't just come up with a short term. Now, last, because the last assessment, there was a hefty surplus, which they have used year after year, but that's, money's gone. And so, as you remember, this past two years, every time there's some cost, they come back to you. It's difficult to plan. So, John and I are saying, think exactly what you're saying, plan long-term, come up with a long-term plan, and then let's de-buy over X number of years, and so we know exactly what the costs are. But you'll be hearing much more about that. Also, not in the budget if the grant is approved as the sheriff's Great Lakes vote. That's $118,000.
When are we supposed to hear on that?
Usually by September, could be as late as end of September. So, October first is the deadline date, because that's when you budget starts. So, somewhere, anywhere between now and, could be September 30th, I guess. The last two years, it's been the beginning of September.
Did the sheriff, does the sheriff still have the opportunity to apply for the grant that he had talked about from a private...
The foundation?
Yeah.
Well, he, we had some discussions about it just in the last week. He is confident, but no commitment was made, that, I don't know if it's an individual, it's a foundation, but yes, a foundation. At least the sheriff has had some discussion with a foundation about covering that cost. Obviously, though, it's contingent on state, so it's at this point.
Right, we have to plan on it.
Commissioner Russell?
There's still negotiations going on with Glenharbor Township on their boat, and as the sheriff met about it...
The sheriff and Commissioner Rittenbach and I met with the township supervisor Friday. It appears, and I'm using my words carefully, maybe the township supervisor was a little too ambitious with his potential donation. So, we're trying to get that clarified. I certainly don't wanna go public and create a controversy within the township, or between the township and the county. So, Commissioner Buick, Commissioner Rittenbach has talked to different individuals in the township, and they have a different perspective. So, we need to get that resolved first before we go forward. Obviously, we would be very interested. The sheriff did admit that the township boat, it's much nicer than any boat that he currently has. It's not what he wants, but it's nicer than what he has.
What size, what size is that?
Twenty-seven foot.
What kind of boat is it?
I'm not a boat person. It's a red and white boat.
Especially made.
It's a, I pictured, I can say it.
It's a fire, fire boat.
It's got the fire suppression.
Yeah.
The idea is that if you go up the, if the condos got on fire, you go up the river, Crystal River, and actually light the fire from there.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, if it's a rescue boat, if it was built for the fire department?
Yes.
Fire and rescue.
How many years ago?
2011. I did that, that part I did know.
Okay.
It was a boat that was converted for fire usage. I don't think it was built as a fire boat, as I understand.
Well, that's...
They put the equipment on it.
Yes.
And if you look on the Glenharbor Township website, you can get more information about it.
It really has all those dimensions. If you're a voter, that would be a lot.
It might be a great option, it might not.
Well, and with township as a discovery, kind of the same thing that Peninsula Township discovered several years ago, because they had a boat, and at one time, remember, they were interested in selling it to us? They just don't use it. They used it twice last year. The supervisor said they used it no more than five times a year ever. And this cost of maintaining it, training, storing, all that stuff. So, they're kind of experiencing kind of the same thing in the township.
I heard that Elma Township was looking for a fire and rescue boat, so...
So, we're continuing to dialogue with the township and see how that plays out. But we did not put any of that money in the budget for next year. The only new personnel request that we received is from the deputy probate registrar position. This is a judge talked to us a couple of months ago. And that is approximately fifty, fifty thousand, is that correct?
Right, they have in their narrative about thirty thousand for wages, so they don't have the fringe included, so...
So, fifty to fifty thousand dollars. That's the only personnel request you, right?
Yes.
Deputy probate...
Register.
Register.
You were sending an email on this.
Yeah, I'll put this in a memo to you.
Full-time?
Yes. As of past year, I'll put this in a memo to all of you and get it out, so you can have dialogue on it. We did not put anything in the budget for HVAC for this project here, because we either, based on what we talked about here, if it goes forward, we did, we will transfer somebody over, and that, someone may be bonded or may not. So, there's nothing in the budget here for this project. Jerry briefly talks about it, it's time to redo the parking lot here. He's estimating $36,000 to resurface the parking lot.
Is that's it or not in?
Not.
No, not, not this is in the budget. These are requests. We don't put anything, we don't put these requests in the budget until you tell us. What we normally do is, you remember, we have dialogue, we bring people in if you wish, and then we make a decision. You make a decision whether you want it included in the budget or not. Someone, Matt, has tried for a couple of years with the two percent grant, was not successful. He had AEDs in the deputy vehicles. He had AEDs in the deputy vehicles. So that is... I mean, it's a deputy, it's the sheriff's department, but Matt has requested that. And that's about $35,700 to equip all the vehicles.
Do they have AEDs in those vehicles right now?
He made it sound like no.
I think a few may or not.
He made it sound like a few, but not all.
I thought they all did at one time, but maybe for getting old and...
Yeah, and not replaced.
We can find out, I can start.
Yeah. Batteries die and they're not...
They're only good for so long, you replace them.
What's AED?
It's a defibrillators. It stands for...
Automatic external defibrillator.
Yeah, there you go.
And they've had them with their...
You're not recognized from the floor.
State your name.
Yeah, state your name, but ask your hand.
Commissioner Russell.
Is Matt's van that's used for emergencies, has that been...
Well, that's... Coming up further, I got a lot more here. So that's it. This is other coming from Matt, but actually it's for the sheriff's department also. It's that special lean secure line that we talked about during our challenges with our network last year. We need a special lean line for law enforcement, and that's $5,700.
Yeah, it's a year, probably.
Yes.
Every year.
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah. The Motorola dispatch council maintenance is $21,000. The tower top amplifiers, which I think you were talking about Commissioner Russell, is between $15,000 and $30,000. Oh, I'm sorry.
Wasn't that Motorola stuff included in their big fat amount we approved?
Which big fat amount?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar tower thing?
No. Contractual was left out from all of that.
So we do this every year.
I know, but I thought we had that money.
You did for two years, but remember, this is beyond that point. And you said you have to either do a millage, a phone surcharge, or come from a general fund, so we're at that point now.
But how much was it?
Approximately $21,000, but there's more equipment here coming up. The tower top amplifiers to enhance coverage is $15,000 to $30,000. The upgrade to... Is it the Omino to Peshawetown Jeff Tower?
I think it's Peshawetown.
Peshawetown, right? The upgrade to the...
Yeah, I'm just looking at what you wrote down and then what I have here in the merit.
It's $110,000 I have for the...
So the... What you have written down on the $21,000 that Chet was talking about, that is actually in.
Oh, Matt, this is in the budget?
That is in, yes, that's in, and that is under 911 because it is specifically for dispatch council maintenance, which is not the same as your radios. Your radios is only $10,000 a year. And that is in the 270... That's in the 476, which is your radio.
So this is in the budget?
The 20... The $21,000 is in. It's under contractual.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're okay. And then you mentioned the tower top amplifiers. Those are $15,000 to $30,000. And this is for...
Mine will say it was not in the budget.
It is not. This is part of his wish list. It's for the central tower and the Empire Tower site.
These are... We're talking about enhancing those towers at some point. So once again, it's not critical, but if you want to enhance those towers.
So the $15,000 to $30,000, that's what that was.
And the Peshawetown tower...
The 100 and...
It's $110,000, right there.
That's a conventional solution to the Peshawetown tower site, which is our equipment on their tower. And he hopes to ask for that December in a 2% grant cycle.
But there's no guarantee we can get that. So what... These are wish lists, too. These are not saying what I'm gonna do, obviously, but these are just... Long-term. You can think about this, and you can do some of these, you can do two years from now and so forth. Also, we need to replace some of the generators at the towers, and that's estimating about $10,000 because the power goes out, we have to get back up all the generators. They're getting quite a little in the pan there.
Is it $10,000 for all of the towers?
I believe it's no, for... Is that two?
Yep, two.
Two, I believe about $5,000. Right, is that about $5,000 each?
Yep, he's got it at the central tower and the Maple City tower are extremely old and have failed on multiple occasions. One of his worries is that with the ISPs coming in and people are upgrading and we're getting more money for those rentals, are we liable if that tower is down because our generator didn't function? And that's what he was looking at for replacement. I did mention to him that he does have money this year. If there are things that you're looking in the schedule of him, that he could actually come to in 194, so...
But also, you have the general fund with that.
That is what this all is from.
That's where we're all coming from.
Yeah, these are not a general budget request. I'm just giving you a overview of the request. And Michelle wanted to bring this up because it's always a concern for her and it is for all of us, is potential healthcare cost. We don't know, we just haven't planned, but healthcare costs, you know, we've been very fortunate over a long period of time. And I don't see any crisis scenario on the horizon, but you never know.
Except Michelle herself.
Except Michelle, yes. But we did notice she's not here. We actually accomplished our goal, Jen, right? Because we were still debating today whether she'd actually show up or not.
We really need to let... We should cast around a card, though. We really should let her know how much we missed her.
Yes, yes, we definitely have to let her know.
Barely got through without her, so...
The first motion was...
So those are the... Those are the requests outside of the normal, what's in your budget process. So we don't know how long you want to sit here today because we thought the HVA meeting would take a lot longer, so we're prepared just to pass the books out. Obviously, you have not seen this, reviewed this. Jen, do you have any oversight you want to provide?
No, the only thing I didn't mention when Kathy accidentally was when she was putting the books together, your budget narratives are actually on the start, and they actually need to go underneath your information, your supplemental information. That's where those budget narratives go.
That's where mine is.
Mine was under there.
Well, that is perfect. I just want to know that mine wasn't.
Based on our past experiences, you should look to the books home and look at them before we have an oversight or something. So we're thinking we will not bring anyone for our next meeting because that's August 8th. But at this point, we'll go in more in detail, have just a chance to look at it, ask any questions. I'll put all this in a memo form, then you can decide after that how you want to proceed and which ones you want to bring in and have dialogue about, if you wish to bring them in.
I have a question on the asphalt out here. Do we have a regular schedule for that type of maintenance?
Yes, it's every three years.
Three, okay.
But this one tends to more...
That's why it's actually more... We go out for bids, obviously, but it's saying because of it's now X number years old. In the past, we just done sealant. This year, it may have to be more than that. That's why the cost is more.
What about behind you, yeah?
He made it... He made it sound like it's the whole package, yeah.
I think so, but we can...
Yeah, he did like eight to nineteen.
Perhaps the equipment you'll have to move in.
Yeah, which we've done it, yes, yeah.
There's a whole bunch in there. Yes, Commissioner Anderson.
I just had a question about how things are going over on the road.
We had a very productive meeting with the... Wait, damn, sorry, yeah, they're gonna start.
I understand that, but no budget implications as far as so far?
Well, actually, the good thing is, the meeting we had, we had two reps on from Lutz Roofing. We had our consultant from Grand Rapids, the gentleman who's a partial owner. We had the rep from the supplier. And actually, I loved that meeting, quite impressed with them. They knew what they're doing. They do daily updates to the supervisors and so forth, and we can tap online, get daily updates or weekly updates on how they're doing. And obviously, it's contingent on weather, but they're very confident they may get done quicker than anticipated. But, you know, it's all depending on the weather. No, there was... Actually, I was quite impressed with the people that came up from Lutz Roofing, obviously, they've done major, major projects in the past. All the supplies are here. So we'll find out when they start shortly. If things go well, their supervisor will be here at August 13th just to give us an update. I asked if he could come because they're gonna be here working. So I asked if he could come at nine o'clock just to give us an update, and they said they would.
You could have pulled it, Ken.
Well, no, because he was at the beginning of the meeting, my update.
Commissioner Russell, do you have...
You mentioned, Chet, that there were no personnel increases except the one from the...
That was the only one that we received.
Were there any suggestions from any of the departments where they might reduce a position, not fill an open position?
No, I don't think we have any open positions.
Well, the Parks and Rec we talked about.
Oh, well, potentially, and that's a... Parks and Rec can talk about that. Park time position, what are you going to proceed with that? We put it in the budget just because you approved in the past, but we'll wait to hear from you whether you should proceed with that or not. You have 450 hours allocated for the summer. That's vacant out, so David Lawrence, the person.
Commissioner Anderson.
With the new IT contract, have we had enough time to know whether we can budget appropriately for that?
I'm not sure enough time, but I've had discussions because I think you're the one who asked me to come up with a long-term plan if Ron wins the lotto.
Right.
So we're working on that, so we'll have a discussion on that. Not get hit by a bus.
No, never see it, never see it.
So yes, I've had discussions with them. From Ron tells me the transition out is going extremely well, and he's actually very pleased with the partnership so far. It has freed up Ron to do things that he has an expertise on. The computer is a difference, I find out more and more. You can be a great computer technician, but not be a network person. Ron's strength is in the computer part of it. And so they've done that, and Ron said it's freed him up to do other things now that he didn't have time to do before, so it seems.
I'm still getting this fishing stuff, so...
Well, that's... You probably will be getting that.
Oh, you're getting fishing email?
For the record, Mr. Russell finally passed the test.
But every other day, I get another question, Ron. He could reduce his office personnel if they...
Well, those are automatically generated, so... It's for people that we suspect have need. I'll just leave it at that.
Most of you have not received it, maybe there's a reason that's happening.
Because we cast the test.
I'll give you a little secret, Tom. Your only open nose that you're expecting.
If you leave... If you don't open it, you're not in trouble.
Exactly. If you're not sure, you make the phone call first and say, did you send me an email?
I made the mistake of asking, and yes, she did send it to me.
Remind him to do it, so... No, it seems to be, you know, it is a little early, but seems going well, okay. I see their contact person here quite a bit in the building. So based on my limited knowledge of technology, it seems like we can go... And we are coming up with a long-term plan when he wins the lotto. So we have a... So if you take... Our meeting is the 8th, at nine o'clock. Can we schedule another meeting beyond that at this point? Because I know your schedules get busy and... We don't do it.
I have a tentative date for the 12th.
I don't know, we've...
We talked about that, but...
Right, I'm available on the 12th.
Is that in August, or should we... Or are we going to go into September?
Because after that, it gets really busy.
Yeah, we talked about the 12th, everyone wanted to wait to see where we were. Then Michelle had to get the books, obviously, so we could do the 12th. I have a 12th reserve also.
I don't have the 12th set aside.
Can we meet the 12th? It's a Monday.
I thought we were going to meet the 13th.
Well, that's executive. We talked about also having it afterwards, too, so we just throw those dates out there.
If we need to meet the 13th, we can meet after, but I would think on the 12th, usually those first meetings are a little on the upside, aren't they?
I can't do the 12th. Not till evening. I can do the evening to 12. I can get five o'clock.
I can't do the evening and the 12th.
Well, how about the... So far, the agenda items on the 13th, there's nothing controversial on it. We could meet afterwards.
Since we're all here.
I mean, I know you got... Because you have specialty in the 6th, you have on the 8th. I know it's a lot to ask for all of you to keep coming back here. And since you're gonna be here on the 13th, you just block out the whole day.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
All right.
And I have a baby due in August. Oh, wait a minute, now I know.
Okay, so we have specialty in the 6th, and that's gonna end any previous sign this year. And then we're gonna meet on the 8th, and then we're gonna meet the executive committee meeting, and then the budget workshop on the 13th.
Correct?
Budget is set on the 8th, it's on the 9th. On the 8th, it's at nine o'clock.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. And at 3:00, and 13, we're here at the 9th, too, at nine o'clock.
I didn't know if you wanted to keep the second item or not.
No, the finance, no, we're not gonna cross that off.